...of the City of Cedar Springs to order for the August 13th meeting. With all three riots and besides the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All those with cell phones, if you would please turn them to silent mode. We much appreciate it if you could take the message, but by all means answer it. Okay, moving on. Roll call. Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Perry Hopkins?
Here.
Mrs. Nixon?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Cruseville?
Here.
Mrs. Conlin?
I am here.
Mr. Hall is here. Moving on item number three. Public forum. The city council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment of the public hearing portion of this agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public's comment, not to act upon public's comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment period of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communication with the city manager no result is reached, the comments will be elevated to the mayor and then to the city council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a city council meeting citizens will be allowed to address the council. Please state your name and address for the record. For those here, we have added the Community Building Development Team, and we've also added a moment for the library to speak. So if any other person in the audience wishes to speak to the council, you may do it at this time.
Donna Clark, 18 North Grant. I know the library's going to speak later, but I just have to brag on the summer reading program now that it's done. So many things are greater happening at the library, and I just am kind of thinking, it might be because it's our 80th birthday next year in 2016. In April of 1936, the Clipper Girls got together and the community got together and gave $5 each, and they got $100 and bought their little, you know, a library. And the Clipper Girls gave a little piece of the Clipper building, and the city during 1936, while the township voted to tax themselves of $1 mil in perpetuity, and we're still using that today, though Hedley has told us that because of our income level, we can only charge .877. But still, it's remarkable that that happened in 1936, and we're going to really play that up. I can envision Buttons and the whole thing. But anyway, we had 23 programs, and we brought in 2,814 people to our programs. It was a record-breaking year. We had 18 businesses, the Gunnels, the Friends, the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department that gave us programs. We had three programs by the Fire Department and three, all three of them you were a part of. I mean, he did preschool, the twins, and we had the big X school in the park that was just really, really phenomenal, and it brought in, we had around 700 people. It's just never been done. And I got to brag about it at a big Lakeland Directors' Meeting today, and everybody was just, they just couldn't believe it. They just wanted to touch us. We had around 50 fantastic prizes dominated by our local businesses, and four bikes by the Sheriff's Department again. I made a little flyer, I don't know if all of you saw it, but it has, we had this at the post office, although you can probably get in the post office. And then we had from the post, now with all the wonderful things.
Sorry.
And almost a three months, but anyway, I have to pass this around. And the boy in the Sheriff's Department is Julie, is Judy, from the post, her grandson, he just happened to be running out of the car, he was there for the program, so it's all fair. Pizza and ice cream to draw the masses, our local pizza places and ice cream from Kelly's, Casey's, and Country Fresh. Places to hold programs, of course, for only 2,000 square feet. So we had our local middle school, the weekly programs, the United Methodist Church, and the grass on the outside for our preschool storytimes. And by 11:15, most of the dew is gone, and thanks to the DPW, the grass was nice and mowed. So we have, everybody has a part in this. And then for volunteers, of course, we couldn't make it without our volunteers. And the carnival alone, there were about 26 people that helped out. And it was from the churches everywhere, the Soul and Wesleyan Church had just made an obstacle course, and that was very, very popular. And it took an hour and a half just to set it up.
Fabulous.
And we had bouncy houses, and it was just amazing. And a special thank you to the DPW and Al, who made sure there were extra trash cans, helped move the giant picnic tables, actually didn't help, he picked them up, and they were so heavy, two or three people couldn't do it, he did it by himself, and I don't know how he does it. Spinach and Cheerios. And then I just have a little piece to read. It was in the paper, but it really, it's really from my heart. "Thank you really doesn't cover the gratitude and debt we owe to those in our community who gave so generously to the Cedar Springs Library to see that we were able to provide incredible programs." And reading incentives again this year. You gave money, prizes, and food to draw the masses.
Mr. Mayor.
Off the floor? Okay. Well, let me say the part where I have the city in here. You loaned us big spaces to host our programs, and you volunteered to help make them a success. We owe you our friends, neighbors, business owners, churches, and our city.
Donna, and you made it happen.
Off the carpet.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other citizen wishing to address the council at this time?
Sally Howland from the Cedar Chest on Main Street, 61 North Main. I see that you are going to consider waiving possibly some of the fees for the downtown area, for some of the new businesses. We do want to encourage as much improvement in the downtown area, only because it is literally so quiet down here. We want to help more businesses come in, stay. We're not talking about waiving the ordinances forever, we're not talking about waiving the ordinances at all. We're talking about waiving the fees, maybe temporarily. Maybe you have your fee the first year, but then that fee is good for five years, instead of the way we're presently doing it. I think we need to do more things. When we did a summit, went to a summit meeting this year, many of the municipalities were encouraging downtowns to waive fees to help promote your downtown area. So I'd like to hopefully you'll consider some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, any other citizen wishing to address the council? Hearing and seeing none. Moving on to item number four, public hearings. I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing in consideration of transfer of properties located within Soul and Township of the Cedar, to the city of Cedar Springs. Property addressed would be 13900 White Creek Avenue, parcel number 41-0236-100-035. Mr. Mayor, I move that we open a public hearing on the conditional transfer of property located in Soul and Township to the city of Cedar Springs.
Second.
Okay, the move is in seconded. I'll take a roll call vote. Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Cruseville?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Powell votes yes. Motion to vote. Staff, would you take over, please?
Yes, the city received a written request from CD Barnes Construction for transfer of property located at 13900 White Creek Avenue, parcel number 41-02-36-100-035, from Soul and Township to the city of Cedar Springs for the purpose of receiving water and sanitary sewer systems services. CD Barnes is the authorized agent and working on behalf of Borus LLC, buyer and developer of the property. The property in question is in Phase Two of our development cooperation agreement. It's commonly referred to as our 425 agreement area. It's between the city of Cedar Springs and Soul and Township. Properties in Phase Two may be transferred from Soul and Township to the city consistent with the articles, with the conditions of Article III, which I attach before council's review. Basically, to accommodate the transfer, there has to be a written request from the owner of the parcel or person authorized to add on the owner's behalf to the city requesting city water or sanitary sewer service, and the approval of request by city council. And a certified copy of the resolution is sent to Soul and Township, the county court, Michigan Secretary of State, and county registered of deeds. As required in our agreement, I did send a letter to Soul and Township notifying them of the request to transfer the property and the date, time, and place of the council meeting where it will be considered. And that allows Soul and Township to bring forward any concerns it might have if it tried to propose to be transferred. And we'll note that I've heard nothing from Soul and Township. The city does have adequate water supplies and sanitary sewer capacity to serve the needs of the parcel, and accordingly, I recommend to council that they approve the request to transfer the property to the city, consistent with the provisions of the agreement. And I would note that the developers are peers, well as owners, and prospective businesses that have that stuff. So if there's any questions or you want to make any comments, feel free.
Public comment? Anyone from the public?
Yes.
Please state your name and address.
Tato's think, with CD Barnes Construction. My address is 9449 Alaska, Talladega, Michigan. We appreciate you listening to our request. The sewer available, the tenants we're putting into the building are both of restaurant use, and they will need sanitary sewer and city water. Wellinseptic will not work for them, so that is the reason for our request. We're coming back later with our site plan approval process for that, but we'd like to humbly request that you grant our request, please.
For the audience's sake, Donna, you've identified the property, where are your boundaries, where your neighbors, let's say, the VP is to your...
Yeah, I think it was Argo?
Argo.
Aggo?
Yeah.
Right behind it, and we're kind of across from Big Boy, and then the fireworks place is just adjacent to us.
It was lying, the wooded line, right next to the old Cedar Springs park.
Yes.
Everybody knows that. I know, you have, can you tell us, other than the one shop, what other proposed business and plan?
Our other tenant is a sit-down restaurant, a Mexican restaurant. What, you're cooking with the name of it?
It'll be called Loco Burrito.
That group operates restaurants throughout the Midwest, they're good folks.
Great. And I understand they're going to have outdoor dining, as well as liquor license?
Beer wine, I believe.
Beer wine?
Yes.
Craft beer from our local...
I hope so, you bet.
Any other mention to the other end of the...
Yeah, the Bigby folks, the Mexican, and then we have a suite in the middle, which we have not identified tenants. If anyone would like to rent some space, it's available. Kurt can hand out a card later.
Do you use the other end?
Yes, there are two restaurants on either.
Coffee? That's my religion.
It's been a long time coming. Long process to get them there, and we, looks like we got them. Oh, any other questions?
Just welcome. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no further questions from the public. Anybody else wish to speak? Staff? Any council? I would entertain a motion to close public hearing at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
Move seconded. All those in favor of closing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say sign no.
No. No, what am I saying? I've got loaded twice. I'm kidding.
What is your vote?
I'm voting aye.
Thank you.
I don't need to keep it, I don't need to keep it open, we're good.
Okay. Moving on item five.
Sorry, I was reading.
Approval of the agenda. At this time, we have some add-ons, unfinished business. Item E.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda with four amendments.
Where to look?
The first one would be item E, under Section 8 of unfinished business, to be a discussion and a vote on where to hang the Ronnie Murlington Memorial Medallion. The next one would be under Section 9 of new business, which would be I, a discussion item on the relocation of the current fire barn. Then item J, a discussion on the construction of the new library, of the new, construction plans for the new library.
Okay.
And K would be a presentation from the CBDT. Anything specific? Presentation from the CBDT.
Okay. I see, we're discussing the library now, can we consolidate the libraries with the CDBGs, or do you want to be separate, sir?
Item J is the library, item K would be CBDT.
Second for that? I would need to reckon if you're going to amend the agenda.
Okay, we have the move in seconded. Everyone familiar with that? We have a full form, so we can make the amendments. Okay. I would entertain a motion, then, to approve the agenda with changes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with changes.
Support.
Roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruseville?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell votes yes. Motion to carry it. Consent agenda. Any of the members wish, may request, that any of all the items be removed from consent agenda at this time. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 9th, 9th, 2015. Approval of checks paid, number 37-891 through 37-981, totaling $323,761.57. The July accounts payable, checks number 37-982 through 38,002, totaling $114,513.51. And the electronic transfers totaling $4,302.46, with a total of all checks and transfers of $42,577.51. I would entertain a motion for that. Consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Second.
Moving seconded, now follow roll call for the clerk on the money. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Cruseville?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Powell votes yes. Motion to carry it. Consent agenda. Correspondents? Seconded. Any questions on the correspondence? We have minutes from the 6/16/15 Community Building Development Team meeting, AT&amp;T Annual Video Report, MML Annual Meeting Notice, Right Place Update, and Kent County Health Department Matters Newsletter. Mr. Mayor, did you speak to any of that?
It's pretty standard information, just the one thing that I would note is that MML is having their annual convention, it's the 16th through the 18th of September in Traverse City. If any of the council members are interested in attending, please see myself or London. You have to be registered.
White Creek Center?
Huh? Some good training there, if you need to make that. Okay, no discussion appearing none. Moving on to item A, unfinished business. Motion to approve policy number 14, policy regarding the public inspection of assessing records, second consideration. Will the council?
I would like to move to approve policy number 14, policy regarding the public inspection of assessing records.
Second. Okay, it's moved in seconded. There's a discussion.
This policy is recommended by assessors. As I mentioned at the workshop, the state is going around auditing assessing functions of various municipalities. One of the things they're looking for is a policy of this nature, so he's drafted a policy that's been called also for consideration. I would note that we are just putting down on paper what is our normal practice. So I would recommend that the council approve the policy. It just allows any citizen to come in and inspect their policy, their records from 9:00 to 5:00 on Business Street, and meet with the assessor whenever he is available. And it's also available online.
Online. Any, any questions?
So we can whether look at our own assessment or any assessment of any property in the city, it's open to every citizen.
It's the public record, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruseville?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell votes yes. Motion carries. Item D, motion to approve a license agreement between the city of Cedar Springs and Yankee Zephyr Racing Promotions, second consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion approve the license agreement between the city of Cedar Springs and Yankee Zephyr Racing Promotions.
Sport. Moving seconded, with support, is your discussion. Mr. Mayor, do you...
This is the second year that they would like to put on a snowmobile race on our property. Last year was their first, they had great success, didn't cause any real problems for the city, went smoothly for a first-year event with limited advance notice. The changes, there are some changes this year, that first of all, they're moving the location to the far west part of that property, the old lagoon property. They're going to improve an area on the very south end of that property, so they can have a very smooth drag strip. And what they plan on doing is coming in and tilling down a depth of four to six inches, and then smoothing it out. And that was one of the complaints they had last year, that it wasn't quite smooth enough for the racers' preference. So, because that is a capped lagoon, and we're under agreement with the DEQ, I ran the concept by our environmental attorney, and she's okay with that, and we'll have someone from the DPW down there, and we'll do that work. They're also going to add a snow cross track this year as an added event. I would think they'll contract some different types of racers, so that'll be a new event. So it's going to be two days instead of one. We have the snow cross track moving it west, we're smoothing that drag strip portion. They're going to again pay $500 to the city for the use of the property for those two days, and they will also contract with the city for the appropriate medical first responders and medical unit. That's the same thing they did last year. The license agreement that was drafted by our city attorneys attached to council's review, and I would recommend that the city approve Yankee Zephyr Racing Promotion.
I guess my only question is, now that we're, our city is, we're raising property taxes on our own property, will the Zephyr Racing team or grounds there be under the new property tax law?
No, because this is, they're not, there's no restrictions on it, it's open to the, that right is open to the general public.
But you gotta pay then.
Here's the other four.
But you have to pay to get in there, you have to pay to enter the races. So is that open to the public? But if you have 10 bucks?
My understanding it meets the guidelines.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Then I'm really confused, because I thought you didn't have to pay to get in. Like, I thought that was the difference, that it's open to the public. Because if you have to pay to get in, then how's the difference from the flying club?
The flying clubs, they can't come in and use anything there. The people that are using the drag race pay a fee to use it.
Right.
So, and we're collecting a fee for the use of that property?
But the flying club, we collect a fee, and they charge people to come in and fly planes. How is it different?
They charge a dues for the membership to their club, and then they get to use the property.
So it's not open to the public?
Right.
So even if you have $1,000, you can't come in if you have a member?
You have to be a member of their club to fly there, so they control the access to it.
Do you have to be a member to watch? That's what I thought. Everybody can go watch, right?
Right, but you can't use their approved, the approvals that they've made to that area, unless you're a member of the club.
You can race a snowmobile if you pay a fee?
Right.
I'm confused.
There's a fine line there.
I tell you, that is...
There's a fine line there.
I'm awfully sharp.
I will, I will again, you know, touch base with the assessor, but it's my understanding it meets the guidelines. I would like to know how that meets the guidelines.
Because anybody has access to paying the fee.
Right now, we're discussing the licensing agreement.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what we're discussing. So if anybody pays a fee, it's open to the public? As opposed to if you have a closed membership, that only members are allowed? I can't walk up with 10 bucks and say I want to join.
I'd like to keep mine.
Mine, but I'd have to apply. It's like a golf club.
Is it? Pedal one?
And they can turn me down. Private groups can. I get the difference. Okay, I understand it now. Any questions?
Any other discussions on licensing agreement for Yankee Zephyr Racing Promotion? Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
When, when will they be tilling that area up? It has, yet to be determined. You can't let them do it until this agreement's up. So we'll have to make arrangements with us on when they want to do it.
Mr. Mayor, one more question?
Before the snow flies. Before freezes.
I have one more question?
Go ahead.
Are they requesting becoming a community event?
No.
Okay. So we're not leaving any sound ordinances, or...
Nope.
Okay. Not a deal breaker, just...
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Cruseville?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Powell votes yes. Motion carries. I don't see discussion regarding waiving the fees for the sidewalk displays and other permit fees in the downtown district. This is the discussion only. Okay. History on it, I believe it was brought to the city council or the BDA that some of the merchants were requesting the waiving of the fees. Mrs. Powell, you addressed us about that, so any discussions? Go ahead, Mrs. Nixon.
Well, just a couple things. First of all, to...
First of all, to, my contract to, I've never been in sales. Signage is the silent salesman. It not only allows people to know that your business is open, but it suggests it sells things to them. When I was a salesman for Pepsi, if you didn't hang your signage, this was a very big deal. This was something they took very seriously. Because you didn't let people know what you had, and you didn't let people know it was on sale. A lot of buying is impulse buying. I have stopped on roads I'm unfamiliar with for a sign that said butter pecan flurry. And I was like, ooh. I didn't want that. So signage is more than we're open. I feel that, you know, obviously, we don't want anything at poor taste. We don't want anything that obstructs the sidewalk or makes it in any way unsafe, but it's important to our businesses. And I, as someone without a dog in the fight, feel that, you know, until we can simplify and streamline this process, so maybe we have one form that covers all three?
This is not to abandon or not have a sign in order to pay the...
I'm getting that.
...annual fee?
Coming to that. Um, until we can streamline the process on our end, I would like to give our businesses a little bit of a break and say, hey, I know we have this path that people work, but, you know what? We value, we want you here, and we can waive this fee.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask something?
Currently, our, our sign permits are annually, or they have to be renewed every year?
If you get a sign permit, let's say the... A sandwich board sign or, you know, monument sign, whatever, that's a one-time fee, you could get that.
Sandwich board.
You know, we, we have a sandwich board sign that you can get an annual permit for.
Okay, the, on our fee schedules there, it shows the sandwich board signs lumped in with the banners, crosswalk banners, canopies, electric message poles, wall signs, billboards. It's all on the same form.
Mr. Mayor? I would like to make a motion to excuse...
We can.
We can. We'd like to make a motion to excuse Mr. Hopkins from this conversation.
Well, let's, we'll get to that. But on that, is this, the question I'm asking, are these permits, are these signs, sandwich board signs, and this outdoor display sign, is it a one-time fee, or is it a yearly fee?
The, the outdoor display, the sandwich board signs are yearly fees, annual fees?
Okay.
The other, the other signs, well, the crosswalk banner, I mean, that's a one-time fee. But if you're, you had a, a sign that is permanently attached to a building or part of property, that's a one-time thing unless you change the sign?
Well, we're, we're currently talking of, of the sandwich board signs and I believe the outdoor display.
Yes.
Okay, after saying all that, Mrs. Conlin has a question I think we need to address.
I made a motion that we, Mr. Hopkins has a financial stake in this, he owns the business, and he's requesting that if he, we're having a conversation about removing the fee that he would pay. And I'm not trying to say that he can't be, um, objective about this, but legally, we need to excuse him from this conversation.
Second. Okay, so move in the second. Is there discussion on that of Mr. Hopkins? Because he has a business on Main Street, and he pays these fees.
I think, because the thought of which, it should be of Mr. Hopkins bringing up the request and pointing out his, you know, financial interests, and then asking the council whether he should be excused or not from the discussion.
True.
Okay.
We're, we're getting there, hopefully. Basically, Mr. Hopkins, that I hope in this, this is discussion, what's your preference? You've heard the motion? No?
Well, same flag.
Flag? I don't think it's flag. I think we want to make sure it's legal.
Well, that's why, there's something, they dispute whether it's legal or not. Same flag, I have no problem with stating.
Okay.
But she doesn't want to get in conversation at all, is that what I'm getting?
It's not about what I want. It's about what we were told in our training we're supposed to do.
Could we make references? If we had questions as a business person, that we could ask him about that aspect, not as a council person?
Well, you weren't at the training. Those of you who were at the training.
Yeah.
You tell me.
Are we on a timeline?
I don't think it's very fine.
Taylor?
I don't think you can honor a request for a member to abstain and then selectively ask that member to participate.
Okay. Right. And what I gather, and I may be wrong, but correct me, that if this is the case, Mr. Hopkins would have to leave the room and not be part of the discussion? Or does he remain in the room and listen to the discussion? Mrs., you two were there, it's like...
Technically, they have to leave the room, they can't participate. However, this is not an, it's not an action item?
No, it's a discussion.
It's a discussion. So his participation would have, have really no bearing on anything, any action taken by the council because it's not an action item. But it might be more appropriate to, you know, if he wants to abstain when there's antipathy. Because it's not here for a, a motion.
No.
Unless council plans on changing from discussion to an action.
The trainer from MML, that the person could not abstain in the discussion.
That was leading to an action, is what I understood.
Which, in theory, at some point, we will do.
Council's play?
I've made a motion.
Move in second. Um, Mr. Hopkins, what's your opinion? What would you, all right, all vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes?
No, we're voting on the...
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. From the...
Excuse, meaning...
Excuse.
Not talking. He can say, in my, at least that's my understanding.
Okay, but we were told, again, those of you who were at the training, that was a split opinion. Some people thought that they should simply not pay, other people thought they actually needed to leave the room. I'm not. I don't think we need trouble if he's sitting there.
Okay, to clarify everything, Mrs. Conlin, your opinion, your motion was made...
To have him abstain from the discussion.
Abstain only. Okay, that's clear. Everybody understand that. Okay, Mr. Clark voted?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Trudeville?
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin?
Yes.
It was all yes. Mr. Hopkins, you will abstain. Thank you.
Mrs. Nixon voted no, yeah. Yes. Wait. I voted, I voted that he should abstain, however, that was...
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Should be a six to zero. Okay, moving on. The discussion, and we have talked earlier that these are annual fees, and the discussion is of what, the downtown business, the DDA would request in relief from these fees? Okay. Mr. Clark, do you have a discussion?
Do, do we have a ballpark figure on what these fees bring into the city each year from the businesses? Is minimal, a close enough ballpark figure?
Minimal, that's kind of where I thought, over seventy-five bucks for the display signs.
But for the sandwich board... It's not, it's not hundreds and hundreds of dollars. Under, under two thousand dollars usually.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Um, I have sandwich signs that are twenty-five dollars a year, and I'm not sure what the outside display fees are. I don't have that.
Very similar to our fee schedule in public.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Seppert? Okay.
I think along with the sandwich board sign and the temporary sign and the display sign, you have to have an insurance policy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's an additional cost. My way, what I'm thinking, and I, it's just my opinion, is that those, they should be reduced to ten bucks, the sandwich board and the display sign, because you do have to have an insurance sign. And I think at ten bucks, at least you got some steam in the game, and like you, you know, how to go out of the street. You still have to have your permit, and you still have to get the blessing from the city manager, and if you don't, well, by those guidelines, you can, you know, you can do that.
That would be ten for the display and ten for the sandwich board.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Are you a justice judge?
Just for clarification. So if we were to waive the fee, they would still have to apply for permit, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
For ordinance.
How much is the cost to process a permit?
My time and, you know, some are just, you know, it might be fifteen minutes, some might be a half an hour depending, you know, if everything's there, if you have to communicate a lot of more information and pass for the areas.
So would like ten dollars to budget control?
Yeah, ever. It, it, again, it's, it's not going to break the bank by any means. I would be more concerned, and I would suggest to, to council that, I would like to check with the city attorney that, make sure that we can legally have different amounts for the same permit in different locations. So as an example, you know, outdoor display is allowed in several zoning districts. Uh, the sandwich board signs are, are allowed in different zoning districts. I want to make sure we're not getting into a trick bag of saying, in this district, we're going to charge this amount, in this, and everywhere else, we're charging that amount.
So if we're going to lower or remove the fee, it needs to be a process?
I don't know. I want, I want to check with the attorney. I just want to make sure that we're not getting into some discriminatory practices that could come back upon us.
Well, and even, even if I'm in hiding, that seems like the right to do. If we're going to lower or remove the fee, we should come and do it everywhere. No! It's a proper head.
Mr. Mayor? Mrs. Nixon? Have any further comments?
Yes.
Mr. Trudeville?
Well, having paid these fees for the last few years, personally, uh, it's such a minimal amount in your business, uh, I really don't know how to believe in discussion personally.
Okay. We have discussed at the planning committee, right? We currently may have commented on that, the sandwich board sign, well, some type of permit, but it would still have to be required to apply for a, the permits to have these. We would still have, we discussed, we made, I would say, let's, let's, the city manager check the legal council and see where we're at, and hopefully address them.
To be, to be very clear, what I'm speaking of as far as waiving fees would not only be the sandwich board, and the outdoor displays, but outdoor seating as well. When I was first elected, that was not my intention as a concern of a local business owner.
Seating is ten dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. In my opinion, is, you know, ten dollars isn't all that bad. Um, maybe we can, if we leave it at ten for twenty-five dollars and have it for three years for it. But let's wait for the, our legal opinion.
Can I add one more question?
Sure.
I have one concern that if you completely eliminate the fee altogether, that there must, if, if, there's no real incentive for the person to come in and get a permit. They can kind of ask for forgiveness instead of permission, and get the permit after the fact, where if he make, if he increase the amount of time for him to have it, say, five years, and he just decrease the amount of money that we can, like, be ten dollars or something, it would still force the person to come in and fill out the permit. So we know who has them in meeting at the court for, like, taking. And so the sidewalk turns locked, and fences don't fall down, and any insurance, any insurance which looks like. Where if there's no fee at all, there's less of a incentive to come in and fill out the permit. But you kind of, you know, saying, well, I can always do it later.
I wonder, I, I wonder too, if we put a zero fee on it, how it would be enforceable?
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying. I mean, like, any other ordinance, I, I know that the, some previous coordinators have been quite jealous about sandwich board signs.
True.
And have, have enforced it. Well, no, I think we'll just think about.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Am I understanding, what I heard from Sally, that we're trying to encourage new businesses especially, or are we just talking about everyone that's here and everybody that comes?
Everybody.
Everybody. We're talking to everybody, not just new, not just new business? Specifically, anybody and everybody that applies for a...
So it's not like you made it the first year and then asked the buyer to get it. That would be a...
Yeah, I know. We could not pick and choose. And that's where I think we need to let the legal council, go from there. Well, I'd like to see, I would like to have, maybe, also ask our attorney about that particular issue too. Waiving all of these for, under business. Now, we're talking about for certain sections of town, because this is particularly aimed at the downtown. I mean, I, that's what I understand.
So you're looking at waiving all fees for any new business?
For any new business.
For...
What, what would that do?
For a time thing.
Idea.
I would, yeah, I would, yeah, okay.
That wall, it's a, an idea.
Nine foot two.
Well, if they're going to open up a business, they surely should be able to afford a... We would like to think so, but obviously, we're losing businesses downtown pretty fast.
Sure.
Apply. So we'll, just, information on that for next month.
And this is just for the sandwich?
Outdoor display.
Indoor display.
Outdoor display. And... And... Seating, seating.
Seating, okay.
Seating. We're going to seating for now.
Okay. Do the next one. Okay. Do you have a discussion on that? Hearing none. Item D, may I ask business matters? Uh, I have a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Dave Ringler to the DDA Board of Directors. And Mr. Ringler, I think everyone knows him. Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the need, your appointment of Dave Ringler to the DDA Board of Directors.
Second.
Thank you. All who's in favor of appointing Mr. Ringler to the DDA signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, saying no. I've talked to Mr. Ringler, he's came to a meeting, and he was very interested, so thank you much. Okay, that completes unfinished business. Moving on. Can you speak to the rule?
Letter E.
Oh, sorry.
A discussion and a vote on where to hang the memorial medallion.
Okay, we, we have the medallion here, there's been discussion that wants it on that wall, that wall, this wall. So we need to come to some conclusion of which wall.
I think it doesn't fit here. Yeah.
Okay, um, we're going to get all kinds of comments.
There, there.
So, starting out, I'm going to ask someone, who wants it on this wall? Freeze your hands, or?
I don't know yet.
You got one?
This one.
Okay. Who wants it on that wall? Which is who?
I'm fine, I mean, I would be fine with it there.
Who would like it on the back wall?
I'm fine with that, too.
Okay, so far, we have this wall over here. Now, having discussed all that, now we'll have a clean discussion. Where would we like to see it? Mr. Clark?
I want to look at it. But, but of course, that's there, and the audience can't see it. So perhaps it's, it has... But then, of course, if it's there, the audience can't see it, so perhaps it's, it has some advantages.
Mrs. Powell?
I've been studying the camera angles from our videos, and that's a good spot. I don't want it where it can get bumped easily by voting on voting day. I know. And then, that's a good spot as far as our camera angles.
I see.
That over there is a good spot. I have to refresh my memory on what the video looks like. I was kind of trying to figure that out today.
Where would you put me down there?
On that wall over there.
Oh, on that side.
It's a pretty good, no.
On the gray one?
Behind, yeah. That gets a pretty good shot from the camera, which is important on our YouTube, to see that.
Another point?
Is this wall right in the corner? Do you remember, right here?
And that is too, and that is too, of course, that would be the ideal excellent spot. But we haven't seen what kind of room that needs to-
Well, it's big enough where, yes, it's very true. You're shooting?
Could I also, could I ask them out, that our clerk, Mr. Mayor?
Any other comments?
No.
Mr. Mayor, our clerk made a suggestion going forward in the future, that I think is a really fabulous idea. Obviously, we won't vote on it tonight, but that going forward, just something to put in your brains, for thinking about where to put this, that eventually, we have pictures of all of the former mayors to go around it in the vicinity, which I think is an amazing idea. You'll want me not, but, so if you're thinking about where it's going to go in a while, if you want-
Move the picture?
Moves for pictures?
We don't, we don't want to move it anymore, then I have to walk inside.
Yes, I know.
Mr. Mayor? Where's, where's your comment on where you think you're-
I don't- How many mayors do we have?
Two mayors. Mr. Mayor? Going back all far?
Brother?
The city, or the village?
The city, well, all the way back to the-
1959, or probably about 2025.
Whatever.
That's a lot.
That's like on another phone, sitting watching us.
Diameter, this wing scotting may interfere. I think that's larger than the original one, is it not?
Yes.
I don't want it behind my wife, because she'd get her hair caught in it.
Okay. That's good. Mrs. Conley, have you decided?
I have, over here is probably, and this, I always think there's a good view of that from YouTube, and wild card.
It's a good shot as far as I can remember. I personally would like it on that wall, or is it my hair? And just because it's a good shot from the camera, and I feel like that here's too narrow, you may bump it and come fall and-
I'm sure it'll be angry quite solid.
No, I am less solid than angry, I would prefer not falling.
Mr. Truesdale, you're like, yeah, we know we don't want it on the back wall, so it'd be damaging our hair.
I really like that wall there, and I think it's from the camera standpoint. However, that wall or here?
That wall is where it's going to be most visible. If Dan needs to, he can totally share and see it. It's a little round with the wall. You can do the double check, make sure it hasn't gone anywhere.
Mr. Taylor?
Seat software. I have no preference.
Okay. So, what I'm saying, everybody wants it on this wall?
Uh, well, I think, Perry, where's your point? You're on the wall? No.
You're on to this. Okay, good. No, not for you, he wants that wall.
No, I'm, I'm hoping with that. I'm fine with that wall.
I think the consensus is we'll have it hung here. Well, I'm hearing the consensus from everyone.
Tom, do you have it on camera right now, on video, where we could eyeball it on the computer?
I would have to pull up the website to do it.
Yeah, drop everything. Well, for now, if we put it there, and if it does not work out, I'm, it can be moved. It can be moved. So, what we're having, the general consensus is here, we want it hung here.
Would you like commotions, Mr. Mayor?
We're going to center it between the pilers against that wall. Correct? You got that all figured?
Would you like commotion, Mr. Mayor, or are you just mission with the crosswalk?
I think we're, so we need, we take care of that, put it on that wall? Do we need a motion, or do we want to just, no?
I just will do a motion.
Okay, you got all the votes set? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we were hanging the Ronnie Burlington Memorial Medallion on the, how do you describe that?
North?
North?
I'm calling it the west end of the council.
Northwest wall?
Northwest wall, centered between the pylons.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Let's all vote, yes, motion carries. Now, moving on to new business. Okay, I have made a motion to waive policy number 12 to act on the consideration of transferring property within the Solon Township to the City of Cedar Springs at first consideration. I would need a motion to waive policy number nine, or 12.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to waive policy number 12 to act on the conditional transfer of property within Solon Township to the City of Cedar Springs at first consideration.
Your support? Who's second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of waiving policy number 12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against, signify by saying no. Motion carries. I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2015 dash 20 sec. The resolution improving city water and sewer sanitary services to the affected and conditional transfer of the real property on, of my, or White Creek Avenue, Solon Township, from the jurisdiction of Solon pursuant to the development coordination agreement between the city and the township dated December 30th, 1999.
So vote. Support?
Clark, any discussion on that? Mr. Taylor, you wish to speak to me now?
No, I think the dramatic was sufficiently covered in the public here, unless council has any specific questions?
Does Solon have to come in and talk to us, or?
They're not required. We notified them by letter, which we see in the packet, and they have a chance to rebuttal or respond, but they have not, so it's up to us. Mr. Clark?
I'm just curious, do we have lines out there already, or do we have to run them from the 17 mile out that way? With water sewer available? They're already out, how far does that go, at the 16 mile, or 10?
The water extends to, to the fire, corner of the fireworks store and the Big Boy, and sewers at the corner of 17 Mile and White Creek.
So we do have to run the sewer down, or?
No, they're going, they're going to connect up there with, with a portion.
They'll be putting in a grinder pump with a, with a small force main, just like-
So they'll do all of that work? It'll be excellent. Here's a little bit of stuff. Yeah, it'll be approved by the public courts and the city's engineers.
It'll be approved.
Yeah? Any other questions on that? Okay, hearing none. For the roll call vote. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Let's all vote, yes, motion carries. Item B. Motion to waive policy number 12 to act on an agreement between the City of Cedar Springs, Fire Department, and Hose Testing Specialist Inc. as first consideration. I would entertain a motion for waiving policy number 12.
Mr. Mayor, we waive policy 12 for the hose testing issue.
Second.
Okay, who's second then?
Mr. Truesdale.
Thank you.
Then you say.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of waiving policy number 12 for the Fire Department Hose Testing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying no. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Cedar Springs and National Hose Testing Specialist Inc. in the amount not to exceed $2,252. Mr. Mayor?
I move that we approve an agreement between Cedar Springs Fire Department and National Hose Testing-